Ladies and gentlemen, please be up standing for the Chairman of Monmashe County Council.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, officers. First of all, before I start on the meeting, I think we need to note the sad death of Rodri Morgan. And we all send our condolences to his family, and I think it would be right that we stand for a minute's silence. Thank you. I'm sure that the leaders of the different groups would like to say a few words now. Peter, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. It was a very sad news, it came as quite a shocker for everybody, I'm sure in Wales, that Rodri Morgan had passed away. Seventy-seven years old, we do feel so sorry for the family and offer the condolences to his wife and family. My interaction with Rodri Morgan was only on a couple of times. Once in a meeting he was chairing where I was the speaker in Cardiff, and what a gentleman and a character he was. And the other time was in Usk Primary School, I believe, when he came to part of a inter-age function we had between elderly people and children there. And he was a great character there, but he's also obviously shaped a lot of what's happened in Wales, but certainly in those early years of devolution, and he must be thanked for the foundations he helped lay. So, you know, he's a character that will be missed, and we will remember him so.
Yeah, following from that, it was a sad news, very sad news, and maybe I'm wrong in this, but I think seventy-seven these days is quite young, in terms of, I'm hoping maybe. So, you know, plenty of years left, in my view, and he was a titan of Welsh politics, of devolution, of Welsh family, clear red water. And although there was disagreements, heated disagreements, which is, you know, fair enough, in my view, he had genuine respect for all views and tolerance for those views, and I'm sure he enjoyed the heated debate. I don't remember so much the early days of Welsh Government, or I was sixteen and focused on other things. But, you know, his legacy lasts on, you can see it now, and he'd be sadly missed.
Linda, would you like to speak?
No, just to say, you know, we've got to respect the services he did for Wales and for the Welsh Government at the moment. And I know Lord Germain worked very closely with him in the negotiations for the formation of, you know, what is now the Welsh Government and the devolution, and he will be sadly missed.
Simon?
Yes, Chairman, just following on from the leader's statement about Rodri, true gentleman, passionate about Wales and very passionate, I did meet him at one of the international rugby matches there. Respectable man as well, and for a decade he drove on what we have in Cardiff Bay. So, we wish his family all the condolences, and as Chair and Leader probably write them a nice letter and make them very welcome into Monmashe whenever they want to visit us. Thank you.
A little bit of housekeeping to start with. Oh, sorry, sorry, Tony. Please, would you see that all your mobile phones are either turned off or at least unsilent? And I have had a request that you turn down the sound on your new machines, because evidently, when the Citrix is trying to pick you up, it goes beep a lot. And I understand that at one of the meetings this week, the beeping went on so much that they lost concentration. So, I don't know, because I haven't been at many meetings this week, so if that is the case, if you could do that, it would be a help. Thank you very much. Apologies for absence. Anybody else? Anyone else? Thank you. It's a couple of years since I was Chairman before, well, three or four, I think, actually. But I would like, for the benefit of the new members, even though probably some of you have been on other councillors, to sort of just say a few things about how we like to run the council, how I like to run the council. When there is a debate, or a motion, or something like that, each member can have one say. They can speak for ten minutes if they wish, but they just have one chance to speak. They can't come back umpteen times on the same motion. The proposal of the motion, they are entitled to come back and sum it then, and they're entitled to a supplementary question. But if people are bobbing up and down all the time, apart from taking extra time, everybody loses the thread of it. So, if you could keep to that, we'd be very pleased. Thank you. I believe there are no petitions today, I haven't seen any, has anybody had any sent in? No. Declarations of interest, if you do know of them, can you say about them now? If something comes up during the meeting, if you can let us know, and then fill in the necessary forms for your reason for declarations of interest. Are there any? Public open forum, is Mr Mike Smith here?
Yes, Chairman.
Ah, there we are. I believe you have a question, would you like to come down to the front?
Yes, I can come on.
If you'd like to go to the mic, because I think last time people couldn't hear you.
I do feel as I'm about to give a lecture at the lectern. I don't see any point in reading the question out, Chair, because I can think that's there for everybody to read. However, I would be grateful if, depending on what the leader says in response, whether I'd have an opportunity to respond with a supplementary.
Yeah, can I just stop you for a minute?
You can.
At the moment, we haven't got an actual leader until later in the programme. So, I know your question is to councillor Peter Fox, so if you can just say councillor Peter Fox. So, if you'd like to carry on, and you will have a chance for a supplementary at the end.
Thank you, Chairman, I was just anticipating the political process, that was all. Well, the question is, as printed on the agenda, and I'm not sure whether councillor Fox and the rest of the members are actually aware of what's being proposed, so as a piece of information, if you like, I have got here a plan. And that plan is a new motorway. And that great big junction that you see at the end there, the new junction, is going slap bang in the middle of one of York Conservation Areas, okay? It's York area designated as such. The rest of it, you'll see, running right through the south of York County. There, ten lanes of highway. In case you didn't hear me, ten lanes of highway. You can travel all over Wales, you won't see ten lanes of highway running in parallel. And I guess, when you travel around England, and I've looked at the interchange between the M6 and the M42, and the M1 and the M18, and the M1 and the M25, there isn't ten lanes of Carriageway running in parallel. So, my question is, how can this council support that scheme, which is going to see two farms put out of business, councillor Fox, two farms, and four buildings demolished on that route, including a listed building, which you have approved? It's gone, been called in by the Welsh Ministers, and I will be appearing at the public inquiry, arguing against the demolition of Woodland House, but nevertheless, this council is supporting that scheme. Do you want my personal opinion? I think it's outrageous.
Many thanks, Mike, and welcome to the council. It was actually this day last year, you actually came and addressed a question to me about cycle path and rogit, if you remember. And it was actually, yeah, this very meeting back in May seventeen, so it's good to have you here today. And I know clearly how passionate you are about this, and quite rightly so. So, I have prepared an answer for you, Mike, and, you know, it may not satisfy everything you want it to, but it will capture the council's position, this isn't a personal position, this is the council's position. So, following debate and approval, at council in May 2016, the council wrote to the Welsh Government to confirm support for the new M4 route. A subsequent letter went from officers which discussed in more detail various aspects of the proposed route. This highlighted concern about the impact upon the Llanelli Angl Conservation Area. The letter from council is available in the council minutes on the website, but I'm also arranging that the officer letter be placed on the website also for information, so people can access what was said. The LDP, Local Development Plan Planning Policy HE1, reflects the statutory duty to have special regard to the desirability of preserving or enhancing the character or appearance of the conservation area. The same principles for making decisions on planning applications apply to the M4 proposal, namely that the benefits of the proposal must be weighed up against the harm caused. The council's response to the M4 proposal explicitly notes that the M4 would cause significant and permanent harm to the Llanelli Angl-Roggett Conservation Area. The council's response properly takes into account LDP Policy HE1 and the statutory duty. Amendments and mitigations were sought to minimise this harm to the conservation area, including changes to the slip road and landscaping, and it is understood that these proposals have incorporated these changes. The matter of the M4 proposal is currently at an advanced stage of public inquiry, at the end of which, an independent inspector will make a recommendation to the Welsh Cabinet Secretaries, who will make the final decision. So, Mike, that is the actual formal council's position which was debated and arrived at, rightly or wrongly, that was the position. And it was fair to say there was a mixture of views and debate and perspectives within the chamber. But we now await what the inspector comes back with. Clearly now also, we have a new added dimension, I'm sure, and I don't know how that will feed into the inquiry's view, or the Wales Government view, with the latest announcements on future bridge tolls going, and the influx of, I know CBI were talking of possibly up to twenty percent more traffic suddenly flowing into Wales, and clearly, you know, that would cause some problems as well. So, how that impinges on future decisions of those decision-makers, I don't know. But that's the position we have at the moment.
Thank you. Is that giving the answer, or would you like to say a supplementary?
It's a sort of answer, Chairman, clearly I disagree with the council's position, because when you attend the inquiry, as I have done, for a day and a half, presenting our alternative, because there is an alternative route, called the Green Route, which we've come up with, and then you get the barristers acting for the Welsh Government throwing in our face the fact that Monmashe County Council is perfectly comfortable with putting a junction of this size in a conservation area, then clearly, it undermines the whole question of whether or not this authority is fulfilling its duties in protecting, enhancing, that's the words I'm using, protecting, enhancing, and conserving the conservation area. I fail to understand how putting a motorway junction of that size in the middle of the conservation area achieves those three aims. I fail to see it.
Is that your question, then, your supplementary question?
I'm happy to respond. Oh, did you want, sorry.
Well, I was actually hoping, I have a copy of a letter dated the third of May from councillor Brian Jones, the cabinet member for highways, suggesting in the final paragraph that his letter of the third of May has not had an opportunity to consider the position, and that this was a single independent, sorry, an independent cabinet member's view of the position. So, I don't know how this, which is lodged with the inquiry, ties in with the leader's response that says the council have debated and actually come to a position on it.
Yeah, thank you, Mike's offered me to answer on behalf of the cabinet member, and clearly he's not in a position in this forum to do so. The position I've stated is exactly how the council's position is, and you can see the representations were made and concerns about the conservation area, and, you know, that letter, which officers reiterate that, will be put on and made available so that it can be found on the website. I absolutely, I personally, as many people in here, you know, want the best route, and that may not be, perhaps it is the Green Route, and I'm hoping the inquiry process is robust enough, and it's taken enough evidence from enough people, that it should come to an absolutely considered answer, which can satisfy the needs of both the community, Wales, the region, and Monmashe. So, you know, I'm not standing here favouring a black route over a green route, over a blue route, or whatever other colour. I just want the best route, and recognising the issues we're going to see with the additional traffic, I think most people understand there is a need for some sort of route. And let's hope the inquiry comes up with the most sensible and sustainable and less damaging option. We will wait and see.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Smith. Item five, to confirm the following minutes, we have minutes of two council meetings in front of you. The one, and this is just for accuracy, the one on page, page one is Thursday, the ninth of March. So, if we go through it page by page.
Madam Chairman, happy to move minutes on block.
Is everybody happy to move it on block? You all happy? Please put your hands up if you are, that's good, I can see them, that's better. Thank you.
Chairman, that's the two sets of minutes on block, or the one set? The two, Chairman, no, I, hang on, Chairman, that's the one set of two sets.
Madam Chairman, I was just moving the first set of minutes for accuracy.
Thank you.
Move.
Chairman, on page sixteen there, it's quite clear, a petition was handed to yourselves as council, reference to footpath right of way one one eight, and part of the statement being made is, a response was required. To this date now, I've received no response, and action, of what's going to happen with this footpath. That's twenty years of the National Parks, and I'm led to believe it may be another twenty years. That's not unacceptable, could I make sure that the minutes are recorded, I need action on this, or I'll keep coming back to this council every six weeks with this one, thank you.
I'm just informed, May Kelly, that she's going to follow this up this afternoon, and will you be able to let, and she'll let you know, councillor Harris, right? Councillor Sarah Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In terms of nine point one on the second set of minutes, it talks about this council meeting reviewing the timings of meetings. Unfortunately, that's not an agenda item today, and I ask that this council reviews that as an agenda item at the next full council meeting. I've got a number of well rehearsed arguments I can make around the need for flexibility. I won't bring those up today, but if we could have the opportunity to debate and discuss that, that would be great. And also, if we could confirm that the select committees have the opportunity to set the timings of their meetings at their first meeting, then that would be great.
So, you want that agendaed for the next meeting. We now go on to elect the leader of the council and to receive notification of leaders' delegations. First of all, thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Probably in the worst kept secret of the day, I would like to nominate councillor Peter Fox as leader of the council for this coming year. Councillor Fox has been leader of Monmashe County Council for the last nine years. Nine of the most difficult years in local government, well, throughout the UK, but certainly in Wales. And I think he has done a fantastic job. He is well respected, not just by members of the Conservative group, but I'm sure that leaders of other groups would agree, right across the council. He is always very fair, he is approachable, and more than anything else, he has done a fantastic job in taking us through these difficult times. In fact, he is a member of a party, and he, I would suggest, even is responsible originally for the expression "strong and stable leadership", which has now been taken on by others that we might know of. But, Madam Chair, I have much pleasure in nominating councillor Fox as leader of this council.
Can we have a recorded vote, please, Chairman, when it comes to the vote?
Sorry, are there any more nominations? No, right, we'll take the vote for councillor Fox, and Rob Trantr will go through it in.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. The first recorded vote of the new council, and its first meeting, so there we are. So, right, I'm going to call out the members' names, and if you answer for, against, or abstain, please, and we'll get through this as quickly as possible. So, councillor Vertruni, against. Councillor Becker, for. Councillor Blakeborough, for. Councillor Brown, for. Councillor Clark, for. Councillor Davies, against. Councillor Dovi, for. Councillor Dimmock, for. Councillor Eason, against. Councillor Edwards, for. Councillor Evans, against. Councillor Fekins, for. Councillor Fox, for. Sorry. Councillor Greenland, for. Councillor Grokut, against. Councillor Gappy, for. Councillor Harris, against. Councillor Higginson, against. Councillor Howard, for. Councillor Howarth, for. Councillor John, for. Councillor David Jones, for. Councillor Laura Jones, for. Councillor Penny Jones, for. Councillor Sarah Jones, for. Councillor Brian Jones, for. Lots of Joneses. Councillor Jordan, for. Councillor Lane, for. Councillor Murphy, for. Councillor Pavia, for. Councillor Powell, for. Councillor Pratt, for. Councillor Roden, for. Councillor Smith, for. Councillor Strong, for. Councillor Taylor, for. Councillor Thomas, against. Councillor Trehan, for. Councillor Watts, not here. Councillor Watkins, for. Councillor Webb, for. Councillor Williams, against. And finally, councillor Woodhouse, for. Thank you. I'll just top those up, members. Nine, so thirty-three, yeah, okay. The result, members, is that councillor Fox is elected as your leader for this coming year, and the votes were thirty-three for and nine votes against, and there were no abstentions. Thank you, Chairman.
Would you like to say a few words, councillor Fox?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, I'd better alter my script now, it said "thanks all council", no, thank you very much, everybody, it's a great privilege, I've said this a few times, I mean it every year. It's a great privilege to serve this council as leader. Hope I can win my colleagues who didn't want me around in due course, but I'm sure we can still work together, because as a leader, I'm leader of the whole council, not just of one group. Can I thank Bob for nominating me, but also thank Bob as my deputy leader for many years, for the sterling work he has done in supporting me, but also supporting this council. Many people wouldn't realise the depth of work that many of our cabinet members do, but Bob certainly does, not just on a Monmas level, but on a national level, in supporting me and standing in for me at various occasions. So, thanks, Bob. Can I also welcome all of our new members, this is our first time we've come together, well, we did obviously for the AGM, but together as an operating council coming together, and I just want to welcome you all. I think we have an absolutely excellent council, excellent area. excellent array of members, a diverse array of members. And that's great. It's healthy. And I'm looking forward to working with every one of you. You're all leaders in your communities. And we all work together for the very best outcomes for the county throughout. Can I also thank my group? New members, many new members. A wonderful group of people I've been working with for many months, those new members. And I know how hard you have worked and what you can offer this council. And I'm really pleased and proud to be associated with you. And I thank you for your faith in me. This is, as Bob says, my... Will be my 10th year as leader of this council. And it is a great honour. But there's much to do. It's never boring. And there's a lot to do. There are members who aren't here today who have also served well in the council. And I want to pay tribute to past members who've left this chamber either through their own choice or didn't quite make it back through the elections. For those, I hope perhaps some of them are watching, a big thank you. Especially to cabinet members. Phil Hobson, Deputy Leader, who worked extremely hard alongside us through the year as part of the partnership administration we had last administration. And to Liz Hacket Payne for her work in education. And Geoff for his work in social services, Geoff Burrows. And we wish them well. But there are many other members who aren't back with us. And I want to pay tribute to every one of them for their contributions to this county and the people they were serving. And they did an excellent job. And those who aren't, well, we wish them all the very best and a speedy recovery, if that's at all possible. And so that was a good council last year. We will be equally as good a council going forward. Monmasheer is a wonderful county, the gateway to Wales and a region strategically placed to prosper, a place I'm proud to be part of and in a position, as we all are, to influence what happens here. This new administration will continue to prioritise those services which have the greatest impact on the wellbeing of our residents, namely education, care of the vulnerable and the retention of local services and economic development. We are committed to supporting people affected by the cycle of poverty, including those isolated in rural communities. We want every child to have the best start in life and want to support families in breaking the cycle of worklessness. I want this council to do more, to make a positive difference, and have created a new cabinet portfolio, as you'll hear in a minute, to focus specifically on these areas. Every young person in Monmasheer deserves the best possible education to set them on the path to a healthy and fulfilling life. And to that end, we will continue to invest more in our young people's education, always striving for continuous improvement, focusing hard on narrowing the gap of achievement between those children eligible for free school meals and those who aren't. Empowering communities which work to support older people to remain independent is also extremely important to us, as is taking forward our dementia-friendly and patient-led approach to providing care. We will continue with a hard focus on those areas. And unlocking the economic potential of our county and the wider Cardiff capital region again is so important. We will continue taking a leading role in delivering the 1.2 billion pound city deal, exploiting the further opportunities that will flow from the UK government's decision to remove the seven bridge tolls, which we heard a couple of days ago. It only seems like yesterday, when I was standing here talking of the hopes... There we are. Siri's just jumped in. There we go. Yeah, I was standing here talking of the hopes for the city deal and the region. And things have made real progress since then, with the recent 37 million plus investment from the city deal into the creation of a compound semiconductor foundry to be based in Newport. And we made that decision. Leaders of the ten authorities made that decision on the 2nd of May, just before the election. It was so important to all of us. It was more important than our elections. It was so important to put the foundations down for the future economy of South East Wales. And that's what we've always got to keep focused on, that this is bigger. The region and doing something positive for the economy of South East Wales is bigger than our own small agendas. We have to work together. That foundry, which will be based in Newport, will be bringing in potentially 3,000 to 5,000 highly paid jobs and another 375 million pounds worth of inward investment. And while I'm on my feet, I want to thank our officers, because Monmasheer officers were fundamental to crafting that opportunity. And Kelly was one of those key people and Pete Davis also, to shape that so that we have a real opportunity to shape the future direction of Wales. So thank you, Kelly and Peter, for your part, along with other officers across the region, but certainly from Monmasheer, we've led on that. Business is so crucial to our county. And we will support and defend local businesses and encourage entrepreneurship as a means of creating new jobs and making our communities more prosperous. And the next few years will remain tough as public expectation and needs grow while resources shrink. We will rise to these challenges, but things won't be easy. There will be a huge expectation on us all. We will require the organisation to be progressive, efficient and innovative, if it's ever going to be able to tackle some of these things. The things I've talked about will require the council to have a strong team in cabinet and a strong team of officers. And with regard to the latter, our officers in this council are of a high order, as you are starting to see. The leadership team is of a calibre rarely seen in local authorities. And we can take great confidence and comfort from that fact as we move ahead on what will be a challenge in a few years. Madam Chairman, as mentioned, we need a strong cabinet also. And I believe we have this. And my delegations to cabinet for the time being are... And I'll take this through these. And I'll just give the person and the title of the portfolio at this stage. Cabinet will be reinstated back to eight members, as it was at the start of last year. And my own role will be one of whole authority, strategy and direction. Councillor Bob Greenham will take the enterprise portfolio and will be... Remain Deputy Leader. Resources will be Phil Murphy, continuing in that role. Can I thank these colleagues for their... For work in maintaining these portfolios to date. They have slightly changed, but very similar. Governance, a new portfolio, will be taken on by councillor Paul Jordan. Children and young people will be picked up by councillor Richard John. Social care, safeguarding and health will be councillor Penny Jones. And county operations, councillor Brian Jones. And the new portfolio, again, social justice and community development, councillor Sarah Jones. And I have great faith in these colleagues, Madam Chairman. There's a lot of work to be done. And there's some shaping to be done around some of these portfolios as well. And hopefully, as a team together, we can actually really do some good things in Monmasheer, be that through the cabinet, but also through your roles on the scrutiny function, which is equally as important. So, Madam Chairman, that's my... Those are my delegations today.
Thank you very much, Peter. I believe councillor Blakeborough needed to say something. You had your hand up.
Yes, thanks, Chair. I just wanted to really, first of all, congratulate Peter Fox. I don't know if you were surprised that you did get support from what is seen as the opposition. I think when I look across to what Labour was trying to do, I think, given the political balance, and we know how the voting war works, trying to put yourself forward or, if you like, resist the inevitable is futile. And it is pointless. And like it or not, that the Conservatives clearly won the election this time around. And you have the majority. Last time, you were propped up by the Lib Dems. But this time, you have the mandate to run the council. And therefore, I knew my choice was within the Conservative group. And I did look towards Peter Fox because we do need consistency in the council now. I think we have hard times ahead with austerity. And also, when we're looking at the Cardiff Capital City Region Deal, you led us into it. And I think it's fair to give you the opportunity of at least a few years to lead us through it and get the best deal for Monmasheer. We looked to you on that. It is true, however, though, you do have the power. You do have the control. And therefore, you have accountability and responsibility. And you do know that we will hold you to account. And we will be that critical friend. And whether your decisions are good or bad, we will hold you to account. And I think you accept that. And I think you know us by now that, yeah, we will hold you to account on it. When we look at it, it is about a new type of leadership. And I think you've already mentioned that. It's a leadership, collaborative leadership. It's about engagement based on mutual trust and respect. And I think this is needed. I have to say, when I've talked to other members in other authorities, you are well liked and well respected. And, you know, I have to say that because that's the reality of what is out there. And therefore, will be able to work to represent us well. I would like to ask you a question, however, because you talk about collaborative working and working together to benefit the residents of Monmasheer. And so the question really is around, you talk the talk. I just need to see it in action and in behaviour. How do you plan to make Monmasheer a model council where collaborative working shines above narrow party political interests? You've talked about it. You know, as I say, I think you are committed to that. But I would really value an answer to that, to know what to look out for. Thank you.
Councillor Fox, would you like to answer that before councillor Bushuni comes in?
Can I firstly thank you, Debbie, for your confidence in me and your offer to be a critical friend. And I certainly welcome that. The cabinet has to have good, strong, critical friends. And that's the purpose of the select role also, to challenge. And we know select roles are non-political. And they are there as critical friends and will challenge us. The collaboration, how are we going to take Monmas forward collaboratively, is a big challenge and something that I've been championing for a long time, about actually doing things in different ways. One of the key things which we were really worried about when Labour wanted to merge us and take Monmasheer away and finish Monmasheer, was the importance to retain local identity, local sovereignty, local accountability. Because that's what the people wanted. And it was important. We didn't give in to that. But once we've secured that tender and we have tenure, rather, and we have our identity, accountability and that local presence, it's important then that we have a responsible way... Show responsibility in crafting the regional opportunities and the collaborative opportunities with all parties and with all other councils. It is fundamental for public service in Wales that we do things in different ways. And that will require this council to work in very closely with other councils to deliver efficiencies of scale, to address some of the wider issues where there's unbalance and unfairness across the region. And that's the key part of the region, bringing together councils and leaders from all walks of life, working together for the greater good. And I believe that we've set that in action. And hopefully, we're starting to prove that's what we are all about. And it's important, from a Monmasheer perspective, to engage and work closely with the likes of our third sector, with the social capital we have there. We've already... Within our community, the volunteers are already engaging massively with us. How do we bring those forward? How do we nurture those? And it's a responsibility of every one of us, not just me as leader, but every one of you as leaders in your communities to work toward that aim of a collaborative approach and a changing direction. So I hope that collectively, together, we can make Monmasheer a fair, a better place. That's why it was so important for me to create the new portfolio of social justice, which Sarah is really itching to champion. Because too long, we've talked about closing the gap and doing some of the issues, some of the things which need to happen to take some of the children out of poverty, to give people an opportunity, take them out of worklessness. And we haven't really made the inroads we should have done, just like Wales. You know, Wales government's been here for 18 years and haven't been able to scratch it. It's only through us doing things in a new and different way, perhaps through the region and perhaps from our Monmasheer perspective, by having more focus on it, where we can start narrowing and closing some of those gaps. And so I don't know if that answers all your question. Debbie, if I had a bit more time, I could have thought and given you a more considered approach. But that's how I feel, so it's come straight out of the heart. Okay? Thank you.
Councillor Vertruni.
Yes, thank you, chairman. And I have it on record, congratulations to the Conservatives. You did win a majority and people did vote for you. But we won't just go quietly away and offer no resistance or scrutiny or challenge and offer effective opposition, which sadly independents and liberals do not do. Well, particularly the liberals, about as useful as a chocolate teapot, really, in terms of offering any kind of resistance. I'm not ashamed to say it. We don't believe in conservative ideology. We don't believe in their narrative of limiting the state, decimating public services. And we're not ashamed to say it. And so we will challenge councillor Fox as leader of Monmasheer County Council effectively and hold him to account. And I'm really pleased they created the portfolio for social justice. And I think it's a very bold move and a good move. On record, I'll say that. Long overdue. And I'm really pleased with the appointment as well. Councillor Sarah Jones, I think, will be an effective cabinet member. And it's much needed, given the failure over the last five years in social mobility in this county. Two years out of three, we've been the worst council in Wales for the poorest children doing well. And that's just not acceptable. And I've heard many excuses. I've heard excuses about cohort size and that you need a few children to, you know, go off the rail slightly and it messes up the figures. And that is true to a certain extent. But lesser cohort size means you get more of a difference, in our view. It means you have more resources to help those children get on the ladder. And we really need to focus on that. So I do want to congratulate Sarah Jones on her appointment. And I do welcome the new cabinet portfolio in that area. But we will not apologise for offering scrutiny and challenge and, yes, resistance, because people did vote Labour as well, and independent and liberal. And we're not ashamed of that.
Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry, councillor Fox.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I was going to respond. I thought you were putting the question to me to respond to.
Sorry, councillor Fox.
Yeah, no, no problem. No problem at all. Dimitri, thank you. And I would expect you to challenge. But I struggle to see some of what you're saying, devastating public service. I haven't seen any devastated public service in Monmasheer. I've seen us managing to maintain and keep public services going where Welsh Labour-run councils are letting them diminish, even though they've got stacks of reserves in the bank. You know, talk about social mobility in this county. Where is Wales? It's languishing at the bottom of the pile. We heard this morning how economic activity deprivation is as low as anywhere in Europe. What has Labour, Wales government, done about that in all of the years it's been here? Diddly squat. 200,000 children still in poverty. Stacks of money going left, right and centre, down the valleys, doing things. Nobody... And it's not made much difference at all. Hence, we saw the huge rebellion back against Labour Party last year. And we're going to see it now in a few weeks' time. So I won't be lectured by the Labour Group in this council about the shortcomings of Conservatives, because Labour have not managed to achieve very much at all in Wales. And within this chamber, Labour have achieved very little.
Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's going to be lots of bouncing around going on here, that's for sure. And it's good to hear that the independents are now another arm of the Conservative group. I've never heard such a submissive speech in my life. But there we are. We're all entitled to say what we feel and what we think in this chamber. As has been stated, you will get our support when you deserve our support. And you certainly won't get it when you don't deserve it. And as I've said many a time before, there is talent over this side of the chamber. And if you're willing to use it, you will get adequate rewards from us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Becker.
Thank you. I just wanted to say... That's all right. I just wanted to say congratulations to Peter. I do think that you're the best person for the job at the moment. And I look forward to working with you and making sure you do walk the walk. And also working with... to working with you and making sure you do walk the walk, and also working with Labour, if needs be, although you've got to, you know, find it amusing when it's the pop calling the chocolate kettle, you know, black, really, isn't it, saying that they're an effective opposition. So, but, you know, we look forward to working with both of you, anyway.
Chairman, can I make a point, please? When anyone wishes to speak, they should stand.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. councillor Francis Taylor.
Sorry, Chair, I just wanted to say that I think it's really sad that, you know, in the first council, we're just engaging in, you know, cross-chamber, who's done what, who's said what. I think it is a moment just to take a reflection. I'm certainly not any branch of any other political group, otherwise I would join them, councillor Harris, if that's what my leaning was. And I think it's a shame and very rude of you to say so. And by way of personal explanation, I think it's not the way that we ought to start when we have so many new members in the chamber, and it's not what the public are expecting from this council either. And I would hope that as we do run up to a general election, that members are sensible and conduct themselves in a manner that is becoming of this council. And I think that we need to remember the phrase, "You get the council you deserve."
We'll move on to the next item, which is item seven, representation of political groups review. Can I ask Mr Tranter if you'd like to do that bit?
Yes, thank you, chairman. It's the standard report that is done at the start of a new council. Nothing in there and towards. Interestingly for me, because I'm not a bit of an anorak, the audit committee is now subject to the political balance rules, hence there are 96 seats within the council up for grabs. And you've got a breakdown of where the groups have those seats. So there should be and will be 56 Conservative seats, 22 Labour, 11 independents, and seven Lib Dems. Quite prepared to take any questions on the report and the appendices, chairman, but it's for the council to approve the political balance report. Thank you.
councillor Howarth.
Thank you, chairman. Could I just ask Rob, well, could I ask the leader through Rob? We did have a discussion about the select committees, and we were going to review the selects. Could you just direct us on, would we review this now in another 12 months, see how the attendance is, and then move that forward, please? Because it was a concern, and it may be a concern again. Could we just make sure we don't let that go off the radar? Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. I think there is, for the time being, I think it would have been quite difficult for us to have created a new structure and populated it so quickly. I think the importance of a little bit of continuity, you know, is just that important. However, I'll be interested, I'm sure we'll all be interested as a council, is that the best shape going forward? And perhaps there will be a time where we need to look at our scrutiny function and see if it is the best fit, or should it be done in a different way? And perhaps that is something that, in time, the Local Democracy Committee might want to consider again as part of its work programme. I'm not sure, but I'm not saying there's anything wrong with our current structure, but I'm, you know, open to conversations around how could we make it better.
councillor Smith.
Yes, can you please clarify for me the situation with regard to substitutions on the scrutiny committees? If somebody is away unwell, if they're not politically balanced committees, but what happens then, please?
mister Tranter, can you?
Yes, by all means. I think the committee would go ahead. It obviously depends on the long-term health of the member in question. If it was a long-term illness, then I would expect that group to replace the member who is unwell with another member. But that, yeah, hopefully, for the sake of the members here and their health, that isn't an issue that we're going to have to confront. But if we do, I envisage that's the way that we will approach it.
Just to be absolutely clear, sort of more the casual, sort of something happens and a member cannot attend for a particular meeting, is it possible to substitute and
It certainly wouldn't be possible to do that on a planning committee, in that the planning committee members must have training. And, as I say, without training, they can't be a substitute. I must admit, councillor Smith, I'm not certain what happens with select committees. I didn't think substitutes were allowed, but I'll stand to be corrected on that, the scrutiny manager's at the back there. So if she can assist, that'll help.
Does that answer your question, councillor Smith? Yeah. Councillor Howarth, and then councillor Easton.
Chairman, I was just going to point out, in the constitution, it's quite clear. I think if you send everybody just a copy of what the time...
Thank you.
Madam chairman, I move the recommendation to receive the recommendations here. Thank you, mister chairman. Obviously, following on from the last report, now we have to think about how we're going to fill these various committees. So before us, members, we have the various committees and their membership and terms of reference, which are in the appendix. So first, it's important to note that all members will sit on an area committee. I think some of these areas, I don't think all the wards are actually being captured under these area committees. So if somebody finds their ward's not listed under any of these, we need to help you understand whereabouts you're going to be if it's unclear. But every member sits automatically on one of the four area committees. Madam chairman, there are several committees here, which I know group leaders have been working on a structure to fill their quota of places. From my group's perspective, I don't intend in reading all of those names out here, but we will furnish the chief executive, I believe, once all of these committees, he'll furnish with all of the committee names by Monday, and we will do that. However, there are a couple of things which we will need to do today. But firstly, just to work through the report quietly, the audit committee, you'll see the terms of reference there, the committee comprises of 11 members, but it also has one lay member. And I assume that lay member is continuing, but I'm sure mister Tranter will clarify that position. The chairman of audit committee is appointed by that committee at its first meeting. The Democratic Services Committee...
Sorry, just on that, leader, and just for clarification for all members, the lay member on the audit committee, Philip White, he's been in touch and he wants to serve a second term, if you like, on the audit committee. That's permitted by the relevant regulations, and in paragraph 2.2, you will see that one of the recommendations is that the current lay member, which is Philip White, be appointed to council for a further term. That the appointment of a lay member is an appointment by this council, and quite right, leader, the chair of the audit committee will be selected by the audit committee.
Thank you, Rob, for that clarity. So that's in the recommendation, but, Rob, you said yes. Okay. And the Democratic Services Committee, again, comprises, it says 11 members on this part of the report, Rob, but it actually says in your report 12. I take it it's 12? That's what most of us, I think, have planned for. The chair of that Democratic Services Committee is appointed by the council and should be done today. But members of the controlling group cannot take the chairmanship of that role. It is a role which is reserved to the opposition groups. So, madam chairman, in due course, I would ask you to call for nominations for the position of chairman of Democratic Services.
Will it be stood at the end?
At the end, yes, yes. We note also the regulatory committees, again, planning 16 members, licensing 12, and then there are various subcommittees that the licensing committee will put in place. The chairmanship of those committees is done at their first meeting, and again, the membership of those committees will be furnished from our group and I'm sure others after this meeting. There are various other small committees which meet on an ad hoc basis and very rarely, and they're identified in, certainly one in D, the appeals committee. Again, we will furnish names to that afterwards. And the local authority governors committee, seven members, politically balanced, again, we will forward the names. And this goes for the next committee of the Standing Advisory Council for Religious Education. All of these through here, madam chairman, they are all pretty straightforward and require us to supply names, and leaders will do so. Then it identifies the select committees, and the select committees are nine members on each. And the fifth select committee is a relatively new one, the Public Service Board, again, nine members, but we know that four of the members on that will be the chairs of the other four select committees, needing us then to populate the remainder of that select committee. And for clarity, the select committees are allocated to political groups, and the Chair of Economic Development and Strong Communities will sit with the Conservative group, and children, young peoples, I believe, is sitting with the Labour group. And I'm assuming that the adults then will sit with the independent group, because that's how the allocation falls. And it must be noted then that there are various other added members who can join certain committees, and they're listed there down in the bottom of 2.5. Standards Committee also is identified there, requiring three members of the authority to join various co-opties to take that committee forward. Rob, I believe there was a, madam chairman, I think there was a late report came, and I think it may be pertinent to one of these items which Rob may need to clarify. And then with that, madam chairman, happy to go and move the recommendations, but ask you to call for nominations for the Democratic Services Committee.
Thank you, leader. At the end of the agenda, members, it's item 11 on your agenda. It's appointment of the community committee member to the Standards Committee. This has come as a late report by me, in that Irene Cameron is a Flangiby Committee Council member. Obviously, I didn't know the result of the elections until quite recently. I spoke to her on Monday, and she does wish to remain as the community member, so the community town council representative on Standards Committee, she wishes to remain in that post. The regulations allow that, this is her, but will be her final term. So that's the report at number 11 on your agenda, and perhaps we can consider the report at that time. Thank you. Thank you, chairman.
May I just ask, Rob, on the basis of the audit, the lay member, he did say that that's a two-term appointment if they saw required, is that correct? That's 10 years then, as an outside member appointed to the audit committee? Is that part of the law? Is that part of our agreement within the constitution? Because that's heck of a long time for somebody to be a lay member, give somebody else a chance, that's always thinking. But is it the law? We have to stand by that one?
Can I take that, please, chairman? Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's in the guidance, if you want to have a look at it, councillor Howarth, the guidance to the 2011 measure, if you have a look in there, the lay member can have one further term if the council so desires. It's a decision for this council, of course, but Philip White has, I understand, we've been in touch with him, he wants to serve a further term. That is allowed under the guidance, but it is a decision for this council. And if council decides we would like to have a different lay member, then of course, that is within its gift. Is that okay, chairman?
Yeah, madam chairman, thank you for that guidance, Rob, and I'm happy to move that mister White continues for the next term.
Now, can we have nominations for the chair of Democratic Services Committee from the opposition parties? Is it?
I think, chairman, that the chairs are selected by the committee, I think.
Yeah.
No? Right, I do apologise, I've got that wrong. So I'll retract that, chairman.
Sorry, it's just this one committee, the Democratic Services Committee, which has to be appointed by this council.
It has to be appointed by the council.
I do apologise, chairman, I thought you said select committee. I do apologise.
Sorry. I may have said select services. councillor Easton.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I'd like to...
David Evans. Any more nominations?
A seconded.
Seconded, thank you. Any more nominations? All those in favour of David Evans taking this? Thank you very much.
Madam chairman, can I move all the other recommendations in there as well? Thank you, mister chairman. Madam chairman, again, this is something we have to do every year, usually it's something which is quite painless, but because this is the start of a new term, and there are several members who have left us, it is important that we reappoint to those committees to replace those individuals. Throughout this, madam chairman, councillor Greenland on behalf of the Conservative Group will share our nominations to various spaces within the schedule. However, madam chairman, I'm sure at times there may be a need for voting, because there may be more than just our nominations for certain posts. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I've been thinking of nomination from my side, but as I spoke to you earlier, can we sit down for this lot of 70 there altogether? Can we sit down?
Chair, if I could kick off with the first one, the Brecon Beacons National Park Authority, our nominations would be councillor Anne Webb and councillor Matt Fekins.
Thank you, Chair. Our nomination would be Martin Grockott.
And our nomination will be councillor David Jones. Chairman, may I say a few words for David? David, as we all know, has been a long-serving member now for five years. He's our possibly only Welsh speaker, and that's very important with the national parks, i.e. full Welsh speaker. And he's got part of the Brecon Beacons within his own ward, and we did find that, actually, the last term of council, not having membership on the parks where... membership on the parks where their ward does not lie within the parks is, for me and for members of the national park and communities within the national park, is quite serious. Representation is valuable. And we do feel that having representation like David there would be a valuable asset to the national parks, but valuable asset to Monmouthshire as well, because it will mean we'll have the representation solely from somebody within the national parks. Thank you.
Chairman, could I just make a suggestion? We've got something like 80 of these to be done. If we have representations from every single nominee, we are going to be here some time. Can I suggest that rather than talk about each applicant, we simply take them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, we'll just have the names then. Right, so...
Dave Jones for us.
Votes for Matt Fekins.
Chairman, may I suggest to council that, bearing in mind that the majority of members have approved councillors Webb and councillor Fekin for the position on the national park, that that ends the matter, and you can now move on to the appointments panel for the Evaluation Tribunal?
Thank you. And our nominations for the Evaluation Tribunal are councillor Matt Fekins. I don't think councillor Jordan at this point. Yes? Yes, councillor Jordan as well.
And votes for councillor Harry. Right, so that's the first three, is it? First three. That's councillor Higginson, Fekins and Jordan.
If we move on, Madam Chair, to the Oldbury Power Station Stakeholder Group, councillor Davy.
No nominations this side, Chair, but can I ask chairs in diligence on point two, which was the Caldecott Drainage Board? I notice it also comes out in number seven. Perhaps councillor Murphy can explain where we are with that one, and do you have a nomination?
I haven't got, I haven't got, that is two. I've got nothing for two there. It's down to seven.
Yeah, well, they're two different bodies within the same NRW. Councillor Murphy might explain exactly where we are with that.
Councillor Murphy, can you explain, please?
On my list, there isn't a two, it's just seven, and the nominations, I'm sure councillor Greenland will say is councillor Easton with me as his substitute.
Thank you. Right, so we'll go back to...
Chairman, could you just remind us, because I'm sure we're on number four, Oldbury Power Station. Why are we discussing number seven?
We're not.
We're not?
Councillor Easton thought we'd missed out number two.
Oh, right.
But there isn't a number two. Sorry. Right, we'll go back to, yeah. We're dealing with the Oldbury, councillor Easton, you threw us a bit. Any nominations? No nominations? No nominations? Any from anywhere else? Sorry, any nominations from any other, no. So that's councillor Davy. Oh, better add, I suppose, yes.
Thank you.
Right. Bob, Bob, number five?
The Gwent Police and Crime Panel, I think the monitoring officer might have some information for us on what the political representation will be on this, but our representation, first of all, would be councillor Clark, and I'll await any further information from the monitoring officer.
Yes, thank you, councillor Greenland. Yes, Cefili administer the Police and Crime Panel, and they've been in touch with us to get our sort of results, and they've come back, and their provisional view on it is that there will be one Conservative nomination and one Labour nomination. But that may change, bearing in mind that the Police and Crime Panel, the political balance is calculated on a Gwent-wide basis. So it may be that your decision today, we may have to look at it once more at a subsequent council meeting when the administrator at Cefili, if she changes her view on our nomination. So at the moment, Cefili are saying they want one Conservative nomination and one Labour nomination.
Thank you, Chair. I'm the nominee from the Labour Group interim then. Thank you.
I was just going to say, Chair, if I can help here, be helpful. It is a Conservative, one Conservative nomination and one Labour nomination from this authority.
So as I said, it was interim, but if that's the case, yes, it is me nominated.
For the next one, Madam Chair, Joint Council for Wales, we propose, as is councillor Murphy, councillor Higginson. Moving on, National Resources Wales, this is the one that's just been mentioned, councillor Easton with the substitute councillor Murphy, and the advisory groups, councillor Ruth Edwards, councillor Matt Fekins and councillor Laura Jones.
Well, on the basis that I understand my position with councillor Murphy, we nominate councillor Alan Davies for one of the posts that stand on, I think, the Monmouth one.
One small point on that, Madam Chair, is it does say that the term of office is four years. I would think now that actually should be five years, the term of council on that one.
So with councillor Alan Davies, is that the new vote now, or is that the right number?
Wait, how many numbers are there?
I'd like to put Joe Watkins down for this committee, please.
Oh, sorry. Madam Chair, at this point, there are two other bodies which are very important for us. The last council has already made the appointments to this, but I think it is important that these are added to the list. And the first one is the Regional Cabinet. I think it's called the Cardiff Capital Regional Board is the full title of it. And the leader is the member on that, and I am his deputy on that board, but I think it should be noted. And I guess it's for a one-year renewable term, I would imagine, on that one.
If it's named as the leader, it doesn't matter who the leader is.
Yeah.
Councillor Greenland, I'd just say that's the Cardiff Capital Region Joint Cabinet Committee.
Can I come back?
If you say so, yes.
Sorry, councillor Greenland, can I just go back to number seven? Because according to me, this, we've got, I'm not sure if the sums are adding up. If you can just go through them again. We've got councillor Easton, councillor Murphy as substitute to councillor Easton, and then the advisory group I've got down here, councillor Anne Webb, councillor Ruth Edwards, councillor Laura Jones, councillor Matt Fekins, councillor Alan Davies and councillor Joe Watkins. Is that too many?
No, I think, I think there should be five on there. Our only nominations were councillor Ruth...
It's the right number.
Oh, six, that's right. Councillor Ruth Edwards, Matt Fekins and Laura Jones were our nominations.
Yeah, thank you, that's right.
Oh, and Anne Webb as well.
Yeah, and that's right, thank you. I was just making sure that was right. So we've got Alan Davies and Joe Watkins.
No, sorry, Madam Chair, I'm putting Joe Watkins through as an appointee for either the name or the reserve initially.
Thank you, thank you. Right, yes?
As a point of order, there are actually two committees. The one meets in Py corner, which at the moment is myself and councillor Murphy. The other four or five meet in Monmouth. There's not one committee with all those people.
Thank you. Right, sorry, councillor Greenland.
Moving on, Madam Chair, there is also, as a result of our new regional working, a regional transport authority. And again, the member has been appointed. It should be the cabinet member with those responsibilities, so that would fall to councillor Brian Jones. You haven't got it on your list, but it should be added for future reference. If we move on from that to the Local Government Association, this is standard as well, two representatives there, leader and deputy leader. Turning over the page, the Local Government Association, the Rural Commission, two representatives there, and our nominations are councillor Ruth Edwards and councillor Anne Webb. Shall I move on unless anybody wishes to say anything else?
No, like, move on.
The South Wales Fire...
Sorry, thank...
Through the chair, we haven't completed number seven. Can we do that, please?
We have. Yeah, but we have, she is on the list.
She's on the list, that makes it six.
Sorry, I can't see any vote or anything because there are three names put forward for a position on reserve, and that's not been addressed.
There are six positions on the advisory group, and we've appointed six positions to the advisory group.
There are six on the advisory group, and we've appointed six on the advisory group.
Madam Chair, if I might try and help?
Thank you, councillor Murphy.
I think Linda was putting that nomination forward for the first of the committees that councillor Easton sits on, and I'm his deputy, so you'll need to take a vote on who is that. That's if I've read councillor Gabby correctly.
So you just take a vote, then, on Joe or councillor Murphy?
Oh, I see, you put, sorry, councillor Joe Watkins on the first committee as deputy. So we need a vote between councillor Murphy and councillor Joe Watkins. Is that it?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. I thought you were on the main one.
First of all, presumably there's two positions that need to be sorted out.
Yes, okay. So we need a member and then the reserve. So we need a vote between councillor Murphy and councillor Joe Watkins for the deputy to councillor Easton. So all votes for councillor Murphy.
Chair, I'm quite happy to give that one up if Chair wants to.
Oh, so? You have to take it on, do you? Yeah, righto, thank you. You can go back again. Okay, right, thank you. Now I've got completely mixed up now.
On, Madam Chair, I just mentioned the Local Government Association Rural Commission, and just to be clear, councillor Ruth Edwards and councillor Anne Webb would be our two nominations for that.
I think I've lost my page now.
Moving on to item 11, the South Wales Fire Authority, our two nominations for that would be councillor Val Smith and councillor Louise Brown. Moving on to the Wye Valley Area of Outstanding Natural Beauty Joint Committee, the...
We haven't done them yet.
Chair, councillor Easton wants to make a nominee.
Sorry, councillor Easton, we're having a bit of shuffling with papers here, sorry.
The South West Fire Authority, we'd like to nominate Tudor Thomas into one of those positions.
Yes, we've got three individuals now, so we need to take a vote. So we have councillor Val Smith, we have councillor Louise Brown, we have councillor Tudor Thomas. All those in favour of councillor Val Smith?
It's carried, Chairman?
All those in favour of councillor Louise Brown?
That's carried.
Still in favour, that's it.
Thank you.
Right, I've got it now. I think so.
Right, Bob?
Wye Valley Area of Outstanding Natural Beauty, councillor Davy, councillor Anne Webb, councillor Malcolm Lane and councillor Laura Jones.
Councillor Howard?
May I nominate councillor Blakber, please?
Councillor Gabby?
Please, can I nominate Jez Becker, please?
And can we nominate Martin Growcott?
Martin Growcott, right. I have to have another vote now, that's it. So, you'd better just start at the beginning. So we've got councillor Davy, councillor Anne Webb, councillor Malcolm Lane, councillor Laura Jones, councillor Debbie Blakber, councillor Jez Becker and councillor Martin Growcott. So we'll have to go through them as we go.
Yep.
All those in favour of councillor Devon, Davy?
It's carried, Chairman?
Yeah. All those in favour of councillor Anne Webb?
Carried.
All those in favour of councillor Malcolm Lane?
Carried.
All those in favour of councillor Laura Jones?
Carried.
I'm sorry, that's the four. Carry on, perhaps.
Welsh Local Government Association, two representatives, the leader, and I think it should probably be down rather than me by name as deputy leader, whoever holds that post. We move on to the Welsh Local Government Coordinating Committee, that is the leader. And the Welsh Centre for International Affairs, chairman of the council, as is the Institute of Welsh Affairs, which brings us on to number 22, the Reserve Forces and Cadets Association for Wales. Our nomination is councillor Sarah Jones.
Councillor Easton?
No nomination.
Anybody else? Right, Sarah Jones, you are.
The South East Wales Strategic Planning Group, the cabinet member for resources, councillor Murphy, and the Chair of Planning, councillor Ruth Edwards.
Whoever it might be, you mean?
Oh, yes, the chairman of planning.
Jumped the gun there.
The Welsh Books Council, this should be with my cabinet responsibility, me, but I haven't been receiving anything from the Welsh Books Council, although I understand that councillor Howard has in error. So if we could inform them of that change. Moving on from that, the Welsh European Funding Office is no longer in existence, believe it or not. So we move on to the Scrutiny Champion Wales Network, and our nomination is councillor Laura Jones.
Councillor Easton?
No nominations, Chair.
No, right.
Moving on to the Monmouthshire Adoption Panel, and councillor Penny Jones is our nomination there.
Any more nominations? Right, have votes for councillor Penny Jones.
Carried, Chairman?
Moving on to the Monmouthshire Fostering Panel, our nomination there would be councillor Roger Harris.
Any other nominations?
I support that.
Category B are appointments made by cabinet, so we move on from there to category C.
Could I ask you a question on that? When will those appointments be made, please? That's all, no more on that.
I think following the next cabinet, if, looking at the dates that they were made last time around, it looked to be following the first cabinet meeting.
Category C, the pedestrian...
Category C, the Pedestrian Fund Management Group, three representatives, Councillor Paul Jordan, Councillor Peter Clark and, and there's another nomination to come from someone else. Another group?
Myself.
Right, anybody else?
Oh, yes.
Ah, yeah. Councillor Dowie?
Councillor Jo Watkins, please.
Councillor Jo Watkins. You're going to come off, are you? Yeah. And then, Councillor Howarth, did you have your hand up?
No.
No, no. That's all right then. Councillor Jo Watkins, you are on it when it eventually meets again. Carry on.
Onto the Narimbeven Community Health Council, we have no nominations, Madam Chair.
You're happy with that, Councillor Easton, and the rest of you?
Um, we'd like to nominate Councillor Alan Davis and I will probably stand down.
You will? Right, so that'll be all right. This'll be the right number, so we're going to do that. That's fine. Alan Davis.
Do you want to stand down, do you? You're on there?
He's, she's on, yes. You're staying there, Kevin?
Yeah.
So that's all right.
You wanted to spread his name, don't you?
Number, number three on this, please, Councillor Greenon.
The Local Health Board Stakeholder Reference Group, Councillor Paul Pavier.
Any nominations, Councillor Easton?
No, thank you, none.
Anybody else? Number four.
The Board of Monmouthshire Housing Association, Councillor Peter Clark, Councillor Jane Pratt, Councillor Anne Webb and Councillor Sheila Woodhouse.
Any nominations?
Yes, Chair, Councillor Grocott and Councillor Alan Davis.
Grocott and Alan Davis. Right, we have to vote for this now. Those in favour of Councillor Peter Clark?
Carried.
Those in favour of Councillor Jane Pratt?
Carried.
Those in favour of Councillor Anne Webb?
Carried.
And those in favour of Councillor Sheila Woodhouse?
And that's carried as well.
Right. Number five now.
The Education Achievement Service, this has to be the Cabinet member with responsibility for schools or learning, Councillor Richard John, and then we need a nomination to the Board of Directors, which is myself. Move-
Do we have, that's it, is it?
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Moving on to SRS Business Solutions, the, the member with portfolio responsibility for finance as the representative member to the company would be Councillor Murphy and me to the company's Board of Directors. Moving to the-
Could they have, Councillor Greenon?
There is no, there's nothing in the constitution of the company for an observer on this. This is a joint company held with Torvine Borough Council.
The next one down is what you're thinking about, I think Tony's finished. Right, sorry,
SRS Strategic Board, Councillor, Councillor Murphy, the Cabinet member with a portfolio for resources. CMC squared is no longer in existence, but there is Apprentice, which is the company set up as a, as a joint company between this council, Melin Homes and the Building Trades Council, I think it is. This is a, this is for the term of the council and we would have on that one member and one officer, and the nomination for the one member is myself, Madam Chair.
Any nominations?
Nope, no.
Category D now, is it?
The Chair, could I ask advice on, you've mentioned Apprentice, do I declare a personal interest because my grandson is with them, or just take it as read?
Councillor Easton, if you feel you want to declare a personal interest there, then please do and complete the, complete the pro forma.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Chairman, what number is that?
We're on category D now, we're starting.
Category D.
Category D voluntary organisations. Right, so?
Yeah, if I could explain, Madam Chair, with the, we no longer have CMC squared, but a part of the CMC squared's duties were to appoint representatives to Apprentice, the joint apprenticeship group that we hold, and therefore that becomes a nomination for this council to make direct. So that is a new one, which is not on the list but needs to be added from here on.
So-
Moving on to category D, the Borough Theatre Voluntary Management Committee, that as responsible Cabinet member is me as well, Madam Chair. The Monmouthshire and Brecon Canal Working Party, Councillor Richard Roden.
Any other nominations?
You nominate Martin Grocott, please.
Martin Grocott. Right, so votes for Councillor Richard Roden.
It's carried, Chairman?
Moving on to the Wales Council for the Blind, Councillor Jordan and Councillor Jamie Trehan.
New nomination?
No nominations.
The Disability Wales, previously known as the Wales Council for the Disabled, Councillor Sarah Jones and- Oh, yes, and Andrew James.
No nominations.
Category F.
Moving to category E, the Monmouthshire County Citizens Advice Bureau, Councillor Phil Murphy and Councillor Brian Strong. The Chepstow Citizens, or Senior Citizens Centre Welfare Trust.
Put your microphone on, please.
Sorry, which one are we talking about now?
You jumped, you jumped from Monmouthshire CAB straight on before you could put a nomination in.
Nominate CAB, it was Councillor Phil Murphy and, and you wanted to make a nomination.
Councillor Alan Davis I put forward. There's two.
Go back to number six.
Number five, Bob, can you go back to that? So it's Brian, it was-
Yes, it's Councillor Phil Murphy and Councillor Brian Strong.
Well, nominated comes to Alan Davis.
Alan Davis, right, we have to vote for this one. All those in favour of Councillor Phil Murphy?
Yeah, let's move, Chairman.
All those, there's two of them.
Chairman, can I suggest that when Labour want to nominate, can they just put their hand up so you know, because it's as though we're like going back and keep going back.
Councillor Brian Strong.
Sorry, Simon, the Chair is looking at me every time for a nomination. They don't need to put their hand up, she looks at me first.
Councillor Brian Strong, then we have Councillor Alan, right.
Yeah, it's carried, Chairman?
So, right, Councillor Taylor.
Sorry, just a, just a note, Chair, you keep having your microphone on and, or there is a microphone on up at the front and the sound, I don't know that there are many members of the public watching this very thrilling meeting, but if they are, the sound quality will be pretty poor because the microphone keeps being left on. That is, that is what I'm hearing from people who are watching with bated breath outside of the council.
Thank you very much, Councillor Taylor. I think the mistake was that my, my Vice Chairman was helping me by putting that mic on as well, so he's been very kind. Righto, where are we now? Chepstow Senior Citizens-
Chepstow Senior Citizens Welfare Trust, our nomination is Councillor Dowie. Councillor Easton?
No nominations.
No other nominations, there are two places on that, or three places actually.
Three places.
Is there any bit-
Well, I could put Armand Watts forward, but, well.
What are you going to nominate? Bob? Bob, do you want to go on?
Well, I, I would nominate Councillor Armand Watts. I, it's not my area, mine area is not that.
Chairman, I would strongly recommend Councillor Green doesn't nominate, doesn't nominate Councillor Armand Watts, just for like, we want to keep our doors where they are.
Right, we'll leave it vacant on that.
We'll leave it vacant.
Okay.
It's number seven.
Moving on to Landogo Village Hall Committee, Councillor Blakber.
No nominations.
Clennellan Village Hall Committee.
It's defaulted, is it's, yep.
Councillor Giles Howard.
Just to explain with that, when it, there is really a role on there, it goes back historically when the, Ashley Thomas was county councillor, so it's not really read bit.
It's taken for granted, it's the councillor on the ward, in other words. Right.
Clennellan Village Hall Committee, Councillor Giles Howard. And Landfoist Villagers Association, Councillor Giles Howard. Raglan Community Centre Committee, Councillor Penny Jones. Monmouth School and Haberdashers and Monmouth School for Girls Governors, Councillor Richard Roden. Advocate of any educational foundation of King Henry V governors, we would nominate Mr Chris Woodhouse, Councillor Sheila Woodhouse, Councillor Malcolm Lane, Councillor Paul Jordan and yourself, Madam Chair.
Can we nominate Martin Grocott, please?
Going to have to have a vote then. Those in favour of Mr Chris Woodhouse?
Carry, Chairman?
Councillor Malcolm Lane?
Carried.
Councillor Sheila Woodhouse?
Carried.
Councillor Paul Jordan?
Carried.
And myself, Councillor Maureen Powell. That's it. Oh, sorry, Dimitri.
Just a point of clarity, and it's not just for my own benefit, can Councillor, are you two related and is Councillor Woodhouse allowed to vote for, for a family member? And maybe she is, I'm just, I'm just asking. So, just so, so if it ever comes up for me, I can know what to do.
Sir Trand, can you say about that? What happened with Pauline and Armand?
Yeah, that's, that's a very, very good question actually, that, um.
I think so, just a personal interest, even if she was stated as carried.
Yeah. I, I must admit, I would love to have a, have a think about that, Dimitri, but the only, even if it is an interest, it would just be a personal interest, wouldn't it? Because there isn't any benefit that Councillor Woodhouse would get from her husband being on the governor's board, I would suggest. But, so I think it's in order, they're thinking aloud, but thanks for the question. Also for, for Councillor Woodhouse as well to put the pro forma down.
Yeah.
Right, thank you. Can you carry on, Councillor Greenon?
The Wye Navigation Advisory Committee, Councillor Anne Webb.
No nominations, the rest is category E, Chair.
No nomination, okay.
Sir David, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a question, can we go back to the governors on here? I'm a governor on Chepstow School. Should Chepstow School be included in this list? Sorry?
These are foundation governors, not school governors.
Okay, yes, I'll be sure.
Unless you have a foundation in Chepstow we don't know about.
Moving on, Prats Charity Mathern, these were for periods of four years from appointment, but I understand that the two existing member, or two existing representatives, that was Councillor Down, Councillor Murphy, were then elected by the charity for a further term, so they both remain in post for the moment and will come back to this authority once the end of those, their terms come. So there's no nominations to be taken for the Prats Charity at the moment. Moving then on to the Gwent Police Animal Welfare Committee, our nomination would be Councillor Lisa Dimmock.
Any other nominations?
And the Monmouthshire Local Access Forum, Councillor Anne Webb. And then finally on this one, the Clidic Ebenezer Chapel Fund Committee, Councillor Simon Howard.
Chairman, I have to withdraw from that because of my interest with the trustees and I, I believe, I wasn't on that last time, I thought it was Giles. I am right.
In that case, Madam Chair, we need a nomination for the Clidic Ebenezer Chapel.
Could I nominate Councillor Pratt, please?
Thank you.
Councillor Pratt.
Any other nominations?
Yes, you-
Councillor Easton, your, your mic's on. Thank you.
And we're nearly there. This is category F, the best kept village competition, six representatives on here, we would nominate Councillor Peter Clark, Councillor David Evans, Councillor Brian Strong, Lisa Dimmock, Laura Jones and Richard John.
We'd like to nominate Tudor Thomas to be included.
Votes for Councillor Peter Clark?
That's carried, Chairman?
Votes for Councillor David Evans?
It's carried.
Votes for Councillor Brian Strong?
Carried.
Votes for Councillor Lisa Dimmock?
Carried.
Votes for Councillor Richard John?
It's carried.
Votes for Councillor Laura Jones? Is that enough now? We, it's a number, isn't it? Sorry, Tudor. Yeah, sorry, Tudor. Right, number two.
Monmouthshire, I'm sorry, Gwent Association of Voluntary Organisations, Councillor Anne Webb.
Any more nominations?
Monmouthshire, oh, you've got a nomination, have you?
So, votes for Councillor Anne Webb?
It's carried.
Monmouthshire Sportlot Community Chest Committee, Councillor Brian Strong, Councillor Simon Howard and Councillor Laura Jones.
No nominations.
Local Government Flood Forum, Councillor Peter Clark.
Myself.
Any other nominations? Right, we have votes, votes for Councillor Peter Clark?
Carried.
Last one, five on that one.
And the Armed Forces Champion, Councillor Laura Jones.
No nomination.
And then over the page to category G, the appointments determined by the WLGA, Flood Risk Management Committee Wales and in his term, in his portfolio of responsibilities, Councillor Brian Jones.
Thank you for your patience, Chair.
Item number 10, and I can find the paperwork, under here, I think, members' remuneration, salaries and et cetera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, members we have before-
So, members, we have before us an annual report we have to receive and before us is the recommendations or are the recommendations of the independent remuneration panel for the civic year seventeen... 2017, 2018. And the... As we know, members, well certainly new members won't realise that the independent remuneration panel was put in a few years ago to take away the decision making around us setting our salaries, something councillors never wanted around the country, is setting their own levels of salary. So the independent remuneration was formed, panel was formed and they consult with us annually and they prescribe the levels of payment that we can receive and that is... Those are made against various criteria of council and we're in the smaller block of the smaller councils, so it's a slightly different pay schedule for responsibility allowance. Members, note then in the recommendations about the annual salary, which is as listed there and is effective from the 9th of May, and the council can pay up to 17 members in addition to the Chair and Vice Chair. That means there are seven responsibility allowances that can be allocated throughout the council, again, that's prescribed, and so that makes a total of 19. The level of senior and civic salaries may be paid for relevant duties, some of which may now be paid at different levels. So at the moment, the SLEP committees and the majority of our committees are paid at Level One, but we have one committee, which is the Licensing Committee, where the Chair is paid at the Level Two. Is that correct, have I got that right? Sorry, no, I've got that wrong. Please correct me, Rob, if I've got this wrong. Level One... No, that's for Cabinet. Sorry, Level One are the levels which are payable at executive level and we pay at Level One. The Level in B, the two levels there are for the other committees and we pay Level One except for licensing that gets paid at Level Two. Care allowance for care of dependent children and adults shall be payable for actual and receipted costs up to a maximum of £403 a month and daily fees of up to £256 to be paid to co-opted chairs of Standards and Audit Committee and daily fees of £198 per RATA for the... And the bad half days be paid to ordinary co-opted members of Standards, Education Scrutiny, Crime and Disorder Scrutiny and Audit Committees. And travel and subsistence allowances are set out in a report at Appendix Two. It may be, Madam Chairman, it'd be helpful, especially for new members, to have that pretty well spelled out to them around the allowances, around, you know, the mileage and all those things. It may be in your induction pack and I apologise if it is, but just some clarity to help members through those first few months, obviously using the various programmes to claim mileage or whatever you need to do. You may need some support to help you through that and I'm sure Democratic Services...
Councillor Fox, I think Democratic Services is...
Are going to do something on that, are they? Fine, okay. So, Madam Chairman, that basically captures some of the highlights of the remuneration panel. It is appended, but it's also in your induction packs, I know and I'm sure you've been through there and it gives the rationale for their decision making. And as I said, every year we receive a similar report where it has to come before us and I move the recommendations, Madam Chair.
Chairman, just before members vote on this, as you will see, this is about members' salaries and payments, so therefore you have a personal interest in this matter, clearly, but the code says that that personal interest is personal only and non-prejudicial. So I will recall that everyone made a personal interest in the report before you vote on it, if that's okay with you all. Thank you.
Councillor Howarth, you wanted to come?
Yeah, thanks, Rob, and that was one reason why I was signalling to just ask you on that. Could I just be clear now, I thought Democratic Services had a reduced SRA allowance on the basis of last year for the amount of meetings it did have, because Frances just reminded me there that council had agreed the Democratic Services Committee had a reduced remuneration, not the licensing. Now, Lynda Maybella tells us about the licensing, but I can't remember licensing having a reduced SRA, but definitely Democratic Services did.
Councillor Fox?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I may... I'm absolutely sure it was licensing, but I'm not sure about Democratic Services. Democratic Services didn't use to have an SRA, it was only recent years that we've put it, the last couple of years it's been put in place. I can't remember if that was set at the lower level. If it is, if that's what we currently do or were currently doing, I'm more than happy to move that that position is retained.
Councillor Taylor?
Sorry, Chair, I was just going to offer a point of, you know, of information, clarity that is the case because it's gone to quarterly meetings as well. Councillor Fox?
Did we deal with number 11?
Yeah. We'll have to deal with it.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. This is the report that I referred to earlier about our community committee member on our Standards Committee. A Standards Committee must have, in our case, three county councillors, one community or town councillor and five members of the public, five lay members. Councillor Irene Cameron was appointed in 2014, so her appointment was to the end of her last reign, if you like, as councillor, that's not the right expression, Robert. She's been elected again and she wishes to remain on the Standards Committee. Obviously, that's a decision for you as a council. The recommendation that I've made is that Councillor Cameron is appointed, but clearly it is a matter for you as a council.
Move.
Second.
Well, I think that's it for today, councillors. Thank you very much and we'll see you in due course.